Hey, John, what's up, buddy? You in here? I appreciated your comment, your leadership yesterday.
It's you. Yes, you do. You're the one who is saying it in your head.
He's on the talking booth. Stay up and then win the championship.
I was on, nah, nah.
Absolutely. I knew something was going on. I didn't know what, but I knew something was going on. This manager, you ready?
Yes, sir.
I call this workshop of Savannah City Council order. Today's November the 26th, 2024. At unfamiliar time, on a Tuesday, in an unfamiliar place. But it's a good week here in the world's greatest city. I'm going to ask Alderman Curtis Perty to lead us in an opening prayer.
Thank you, Mayor. If you would, please go to me, or excuse me, go with me in prayer. Go to me, yeah, come on out. Come, come with me in prayer. Heavenly Father, we come before you with grateful hearts. Thank you for the many blessings that you have provided. As we gather here today, guide our thoughts and our words, and help us to work together with wisdom and with kindness. Let this time be fruitful and reflect the spirit of gratitude that Thanksgiving brings. May our actions honor you and benefit those that we serve. We pray in the name of God the Creator, Christ the Redeemer, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Thank you very much. Thank you, and again, happy Thanksgiving week. As it is November, we are also actively engaged in our budget conversations annually. One of the main responsibilities of the Savannah City Manager is to present for consideration a budget proposal that is ultimately approved by the Savannah City Council. This document must be balanced, and this budget must be approved by December the 31st to go into effect January the 1st. This is part two of this workshop. We had a full day, totally all-in, mind-blowing day of presentations from the City Manager and Team Savannah. We have an amazing budget team that's worked very hard to help get us to this point, and I'm going to just take a moment of personal privilege and ask them to stand. Y'all stand. All right. Because we, we are now tasting the cake that they have helped the City Manager to prepare. We did not get through all of our presentations, so today's purpose is to finish those presentations. I will, as council as I did the other day, that we have a lot of things on our heart and minds that we want to be able to discuss. I'm going to ask that, for the purposes of this budget, that the questions are related to the budget, and that will help us to stay on track. From today's presentations, once the, the budget presentations have been concluded, barring any major changes, you've all had the opportunity to contact the City Manager, Budget Director, and team offline to discuss any concerns. We've heard very little. We plan to have, on first reading, the budget proposal for this year. So we welcome those in here in chambers, and we welcome those that are joining us on our various social media platforms, being with us today, and we get into the work of our budget. So, Mr. Manager, good afternoon, and you may proceed, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Good morning and happy Thanksgiving to all. Want to first thank you for a very fruitful and informative and meaningful budget retreat last week. We really appreciated the great conversation, discussion, vision, and direction that council provided to us, and we're excited to continue that workshop with the final two presentations from our budget team around the budget framework and around our capital plan. So I'm going to kick things off just with a, with a short overview, a recap of kind of the assumptions of the budget and where we are, and then our, our Budget Director, Sancia Joseph Jarvis, and our Capital Projects Manager, Victoria Keller, will go through our slides today, and they are joined also by our Chief Operating Officer, Melissa Carter. So as a recap, this is a $602 million proposed budget. It is balanced, and I believe it delivers high-quality and improved services for our residents. There are no tax rate increases and no planned draws from general nor enterprise fund reserved planned. As a part of this budget, it maintains our mill rate at the current 12.20 rate, which we've held for the last few years and is the lowest since 1987. This year for FY25, there is $78.3 million in Ca- in planned capital spending. Victoria will go through those projects, as well as all of our active capital projects. So we have much more than $78 million in capital projects ongoing and active, and we'll cover those in this presentation. It maintains 19% or 60% or 60 days of cash on hand, and it makes responsible contributions to our city's pension plan and addresses our compensation stagnation. I do also want to note that this budget also includes nearly $5.3 million in strategic budget cuts and efficiencies. Every year, we really take care to go through our budget, to go through our line items, and find the places where we can cut and, and save money and reduce costs in our organization, and ultimately for our tax and rate payers. And this year's budget includes $5.3 million in strategic cuts, without, in my opinion, sacrificing the high standard for service delivery we have. So with that, I will ask Sancia to move forward with the FY25 budget framework presentation.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good morning, Mayor and Council. I am Sancia Joseph Jarvis, interim Director of the Budget Office, while Melissa is our interim chief. So our budget priority goals. This FY25 budget is built on the following six priorities, which includes investing in our equitable community development and resiliency, increasing public safety and our collective sense of security, building and planning world-class livable environments and infrastructure, improving quality of life by raising municipal standards, expanding economic access, opportunity, and vitality for all, and last but not least, always be a high-performing government. Last week, you received a budget in brief in your folders, so if you want to see a quick snapshot of how our allocations match up to our priorities, I invite you to refer back to that. Along with the city's priorities, this year for our FY25 budget development, we also seek information from our public. With that being said, we launched a survey over the summer months for about 61 days through five media outlets, and from that survey, we gained about, we could tell about 4,000 people clicked on the survey. However, we only received about 783 submissions. Of that 783 submissions, 756 were actually City of Savannah residents. So you may be wondering, what would the city's citizens ask to prioritize? Our service areas were defined as public safety, human services, our stormwater infrastructure, cultural arts, fire, housing, recreation, and planning and economic development. With that, our citizens have spoken, and their priorities have, from this information we receive, their number-one priority is stormwater infrastructure, but followed by number two on housing, and number three on human services. For more information on the survey, on a detailed look for it district by district, how it, how we receive information, you can visit pages 217 and 218 of the FY25 proposed budget book. At this moment, we, the Budget Office would just like to thank our citizens for engaging with us and giving us their feedback. To them, we say thank you for making your voices heard. All right, as the City Manager said, this budget FY25 is $602 million, our largest budget to date. Of this $602 million, there's about $11.1 million set aside for 3% COLA along with classification and compensation study implementation. Our general fund spending is $291 million. With that, we have no draw in reserves for the general fund, nor the enterprise fund. What that means is all, all our funds are going to live within their allocated revenues for FY24. We also have about $109.8 million of property tax revenue. And inclusive of bonds issuance, we have about $143 million of capital projects for FY24. FY25, I'm sorry. Our budget also includes a millage rate of 12.20, which remains unchanged from FY24. So what do our citywide revenues look like? The City of Savannah is a multifaceted municipal operation, and its revenue sources reflect the many business-like operations that make up the citywide revenues. Citywide revenues total $601,632,607. This is a decrease of approximately $13.4 million or 2.2 less, 2.2% less than our FY24 projections. As seen as the, on the screen in front of you, the citywide revenues include taxes, user fees, business activities within our enterprise funds, which include our Civic Center Fund, IND, parking, sanitation, water, and sewer, in addition to intra-fund revenue, grants, interest, and other. It's important to note that the tourism and development sectors of Savannah are continuing to experience growth through 2024, and this growth is expected to continue into 2025. Although other revenue sources remain volatile, the 2025 revenue budget conservatively projects continued growth overall. Like the City Manager state, this is a balanced budget, so like our revenues are $602 million, our expenses are also $602 million for FY25. So what you see in front of you is the, the citywide revenue totals. We'll go into the general fund a little bit later, but if we look at our special revenue funds, they're totaling about $71 million, $77 million, which is an increase of $1.6 million or 2% above FY24 projections. The community development funds expenses include about $2.5 million transfer to the Affordable Housing Fund as part of our 10-year contribution plan. The per-room occupied and hotel motel tax funds expenses are proposed at 3% above over 2024 projections. If we move down to our enterprise funds, you'll see that we have about $9.6 million decrease or a 4.9% decrease in 2025, which is primarily driven by our sanitation fund, and namely our hurricane debris removal contract that we had to implement in late 2024 that we do not expect to have in 2025. If we move further down, our internal services funds, which include our computer, vehicle, and radio purchase funds, are expected to decrease $9.9 million or 17.9%, primarily due to efforts to limit the number of new vehicles that are added to the replacement list as previously budgeted vehicles deferred by supply chain lags are prioritized for procurement. All right, so let's look at the general fund revenues. As stated before, the general fund revenues is $291 million. Of that, our revenues project salary, um, property taxes to increase at a growth rate of 3% to account for some growth in our property tax digest. Along with that, we also have to account for the fact that the city will lose a percentage of our lost revenue in 2025, where our percentage will drop to fif- right now, we at 53.3. We'll go down to 52.1% in FY25. What this graph shows you is 71% of the general fund overall revenues are from taxes. And those taxes include property tax, sales tax, beer, wine, and liquor taxes, and so forth. So now, previously, you saw a graph that shows the percentage. This shows you the actual dollar amount. That shows taxes are $206 million of the general fund revenues, which is the 71% we just mentioned. If you look, almost all categories has an increase except for interest, and this is where the city prides itself in budgeting conservatively. So we're budgeting conservatively here as markets remain volatile, and we're just not sure what will happen in 2025 with our interest revenue coming in. So we've talked a lot about taxes. And we've, property taxes are our largest and most stable revenue source, consisting about 37.8% of the total general fund revenues. If you look on your screen, you'll see that sales tax is significantly, is a significant revenue source, but remain volat- volatile also. Sales tax is about 23.4% of the total general fund revenues. Other taxes, which includes beer, wine, liquor, and insurance premiums, is about, has an increase of about 5% when compared to FY24. So if you'll see, last week, the City Manager spoke about us not seeing growth as we were seeing it before. This graph shows that this, our growth is leveling out for the coming years. So this is a graph that you're all familiar with and have seen plenty of time, but it just reinforces where we have been and where we're going. For FY24, FY25, our budget and millage rate is 1.2 mills. What does that mean? It means that we do not have any tax increases in our budget. That also means at one mill is the equivalent of 1, $8.1 million. Another large revenue source within the general fund is our revenues from our hotel motel tax. Last year, City Council adopted an 8% hotel motel tax, where 2024 was the first year we saw a full collection of 8%. And we will see another full year of 8% in 2025. The general fund portion of hotel motel tax in FY25 is $18.5 million with an overall hotel motel collection of $49.7 million. So similar, we talk about revenues. We can also talk about our expenses. So the pie chart in front of you illustrates that our personnel costs, which include salaries, wages, benefits, and overtime, accounts for 7, 57.2% of the general fund expenses. That's over half of the general fund that we pay in personnel costs. Of this, the 2025 proposed general fund budget includes approximately $2.3 million supporting the citywide 3% COLA, as well an additional $5.9 million to fund a compensation plan. I just want to remind you, these numbers are specific to the general fund, and the other funds also have their portion of the COLA and the compensation plan. It's important to note that the increase in the city contribution for medical insurance is about $3.6 million to the general fund. We also have a $1.5 million increase in internal services, but this is due to our change in methodology, whereas all our funds will now pay for their portion of our security services provided by Sun State Securities. You may also see that we have about a 51.3% decrease in our intra-fund transfers, and this is primarily due to our contribution in capital as additional revenues above budget are identified. They're often prioritized to support unfunded capital needs, which can increase our projected capital contribution significantly compared to the adopted budget. In FY24, in the FY24 projection, includes about $7 million more above budget for drainage and Vision Zero capital investments. So the chart, again, here, we shows our, how the numbers, instead of looking at percentages, we're looking at the numbers here. And if we put the numbers into perspective, the City of Savannah, in the general fund, will pay about $166 million for personnel services, which is our la- largest category to date. And with that, I am going to turn it over to Victoria Keller, our capital analyst.
Thank you, Sancia. Before we get into the capital budget, just to kind of highlight some of the things that Sancia said. You may have heard $601 million is our largest budget by the numbers, and that's based on the economic growth that we've seen in our area. But then you did hear her say that the budget total had decreased this year from last year, and that's because of the emergency spending that we did this year due to the, the hurricanes and the storms. All of that money, of course, is reimbursed mostly at 100% from FEMA because of our disaster declarations. So that's where you see the kind of discrepancies in what we plan to spend this year in FY24 versus what we are proposing in FY25 budget is really those emergency service expenses, which will be reimbursed. And to also note, you know, we're, we're expecting modest growth in our property tax digest just based on new development and valuations. But our sales tax growth, after several years of really, really steep increases in terms of revenues, is, is kind of plateauing off at that really high historic mark. So we're not seeing the kind of percentage gains year over year, or not expecting the kind of percentage gains year over year in FY25 that we had in '22, '23, and '24. Thank you. Victoria.
All right, we'll run through this pretty quickly so we can get to the discussion. As the City Manager mentioned, the capital plan is looking at new allocations, but compared to the operating budget, we're not starting from zero. These projects can take several years to complete, so we don't want to lose sight of the investment that we already have in progress. As of the end of September this year, we had a ledger with 271 active projects. We had an available balance of over $340 million, 63 million of which dedicated to drainage improvements, $41 million dedicated to traffic safety, streets, sidewalks, and $21 million to recreation improvements. To get active project updates and information, I recommend going to the Capital Projects Management site on savannahga.gov. You can follow the links that I have here, or you can navigate their government, and then it's under Management Services. That second link gets you to a semi-annual report, and the third link goes to our new Capital Projects liaison on Kristi Lawrence's team. So some of our five-year highlights. Our Pago Plan totals $260 million across all funding sources. Our general fund contribution is set at that one mill equivalent of $8.1 million annually. Our SPLOST 7 authorization expires in 2026, so that's a significant driver of the drop-off in overall funding you see in '27 onward. Now, a little bit different than it's been since I've been here, we do have some significant potential bond issuances projected. As you can see, almost 90% of those are supporting that water and sewer capital plan that Chief Feldner talked about during the first session. We're trying to make sure that we have our sustainable, high-quality, reliable water system. We also have a potential general fund bond in 2026 that would support municipal space planning. And we're considering some bond issuances to facilitate implementation of tourism product development priority projects as defined by Council's May 25th, 2023 resolution, primarily tied to town, that Savannah waterfront redevelopment, River Street, and Water Works building redevelopment. The general fund and TPD, none of that is expected next year. We're still doing Pago funding to do planning and design costs. We're looking at that as a potential way to implement when we're ready for construction. And that's primarily because we're looking at potentially eight to 10 years before we collect sufficient revenue, as outlined in that resolution, to get these projects done. Costs have already increased, so it could even be 15 to 20 before we have enough to actually complete those projects. So it's, it's going to be presented to council as we go, but this is what we're looking at as, as a current plan. As far as our allocations in 2025 that are adopted concurrent with the operating budget, we have 78 projects proposed for allocations totaling $78.3 million. All of the information you could want about all these projects is in the book. Starting on page 93, we describe the different improvement categories. So a lot of them are self-explanatory, but what is in that other category? What is in that community development category? Following that, we have fund descriptions. So what is the general fund? What are the restrictions related to SPLOST 7? What are the priorities related to tourism product development? All of that starts on page 295. And the fund descriptions are followed by a project listing of all the projects that are planned for allocations in 2025. And then you've got your project pages. OMB, and especially the project managers, worked really hard to make sure these got into the proposed book. Those pages have extended project descriptions, scope information, operating budget impact, strategic project, uh, priority alignment, all that good stuff. So it's been mentioned before, we have the electronic budget book available at savannahga.gov/budget. We have a print version available in the City Clerk's office, currently the first floor of City Hall, as well as the Bull Street Library and West Chatham Library. We have the Active Capital Projects Management site that we talked about earlier. And folks can also submit inquiries to budgetqa@savannah.gov.
Thank you, Victoria. And before questions, just to highlight some things and, and probably define some terms for the listening public, there are a few ways that we pay for capital projects. Two parts of a budget, an operating expenses, and then capital expenses. We pay for capital mainly through the SPLOST penny, which all go to capital projects. We contribute general fund dollars every year to our capital plan. That's what we call our Pago Plan, meaning pay as you go. And we also support capital projects through our varying enterprise funds, whether that's building new parking structures or parking amenities, our water and sewer plans, and our civic center enterprises. The, and we'll either pay for those as we collect those revenues And we'll either pay for those as we collect those revenues, or we will, as Victoria said, come to council to ask to bond out a project, meaning borrow money, and use those revenues that we collect from those different services to pay down the debt on those capital projects. So those are the ways that we pay for and plan and program capital projects. I think the most instructive slide here to council is the active ledger slide, which shows the pie chart of our two-hundred-and-seventy-one active capital projects that we're actively managing now in some portion of the project, three-hundred-and-forty million dollars on balance for those projects. And you can see how that pie is split up in terms of the category of work that those capital projects support. Water and sewer being the largest, drainage being the second-largest, and traffic management, streets and sidewalks being the third-largest. And then, of course, our large municipal facilities, which require a lot of capital funds to continue to maintain, repair, and build new as we grow, comes in at number four.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. We appreciate you, ladies. Couple of quick things before we open up for questions. The first thing probably is that the city clerk's office has been relocated, so I don't think they're on the first floor of City Hall. I really don't know where they are. They're on the fourth floor. So they're on the fourth floor. So they've been managing, as we continue to do, extensive refurbishment of City Hall, so they're on the fourth floor. So wanted to make sure that was clear. And the other thing I wanted to make very clear, because I've gotten asked this question, we've certainly heralded the ability of the City of Savannah, particularly recently, to receive significant federal funds. These are not general fund funds. These are capital funds, they're project-specific funds, and so we are prohibited from using those to balance a budget. So although we really talk about that, we can't use the money for those purposes. So I wanted to make sure our public was very clear about that. My two issues were, one deals with not only in lifting up our bonding ability, the purpose of credit is to use it. And so if we can really create opportunities to use it, we have the bonding ability to help move projects along, I think that is a very wise and strategic use of our bonding and our credit rating. The other thing I wanted to lift was active ledger, two-hundred-and-seventy-one active projects. Mr. Manager, I think we've discussed this a couple of years ago at a former administration, the city moved away from project management and wanted to kind of manage these projects in-house. I don't think that is the wisest, highest, or best use of our resources. We have a team that obviously with two-hundred-and-seventy-one active projects and more that council is always asking you about, that we want to see movement on. I just don't think that is just the best way for us. Obviously, if we have individuals that are hired, or firms that are hired to manage specific things, and that's all they do, that it might be, and we've employed that in the past, and it's been very helpful for us, particularly, again, with a very aggressive, and I say aggressive with a capital A, city council who expects to see things moving. So I'll just ask that you keep that into consideration in managing that.
Yes, sir. Well, to that point, I think we completely agree. We are actually in the final stages of receiving bids on an RFP for Project Management Services for the majority of our horizontal infrastructure. So for our streets and transportation projects, and some of our big corridor projects, our water and sewer infrastructure projects are managed by third-party project managers as well. And I'll also make a note about the comment on the bonding capacity. We do have a lot of bonding capacity right now, and I think that's due to the really great financial stewardship of city council and of the great staff that we have in financial services and budget. I do want to highlight that we are going to be, we're going to be using that bonding capacity, or asking council to use that bonding capacity on some major things, including big investments in water and sewer, as we've discussed in this room, related to upgrades to IND and to maintenance through all of our facilities. Our tourism product development projects, especially the three that this council identified as their priorities, the waterfront redevelopment, the Water Works redevelopment, and tied-to-town, all of those projects will likely require bonding, as we want to get through those projects early and not wait until that fund collects the necessary dollars to pay for that all upfront. And because of our good credit and falling interest rates, we will be able to get very, very cheap money and be able to do those projects. So I want to just kind of mention that, you know, it's really good to have some dry powder in that bonding capacity now as we're looking at these big projects.
And thank you. And ladies, great job. Thank you very much. We appreciate you. Questions from council?
All right, we'll start. Aldo woman, while the Brian.
Just, I understand what the inter-fund is for, is transferring funds between other funding items that we have. I'm trying to figure out now, and we say we can't use money for, how do we determine what we can use for, you know, like the T-Splice and all those things? We can use them only for specific things? Well, when it comes to the inter-fund, how do we determine what can be used? How do you?
So let me take, I'll take a crack at that. So the inter-fund budget line is kind of an internal, an internal accounting code, which is essentially that our operating departments, let's use the example of police and fire, they are going to get, they're going to get a budget allocation for their operations. And some of their operations require IT services, they require real estate, they require fleet. Well, we do all of that in-house, right? So we have a formula which they will pay back those services from the department account into those inter-fund transfers to be able to pay for those kind of internal services. So that's how we manage that budget. We want our departments to know how much it costs to do their work, even if the city is supplying some of those resources to them, like real estate or IT or HR services.
Is there a time attached to it? And is it interest-bearing if we loan within the funds?
So there's specifically, I won't say a time attached, but the way the city manager just explained, we look at it for the full year. What is it going to cost IT to service fire or police for that full upcoming year of services? So we pay for those services through the inter-fund transfer.
Okay. Thank you so much for clarifying that. Appreciate that.
Yes.
Thank you. I don't have any more questions. Great job.
Thank you. Any other questions? Aldo woman, Bill.
Yes, related to that, I heard one of you say, when you were doing your general fund expenses chart, that there was a one-point-five-mill increase in internal services, and I think the one-point-three percent decrease in inter-fund transfers. And I think you said it was because security services, I see you, Melissa, our security services was transferred to each of the, I guess, individual funds? So prior to that, I'm assuming that security services citywide was paid for from the general fund?
So, yes, you're absolutely correct. So prior to 2025, the general fund was carrying the burden of the security services citywide. As part of efficiencies to manage our general fund and our other funds, we noticed that it may, it will be beneficial if we split, move this cost to our internal services, where it's managed by our risk management director, Brian Hollis, and we can easily distribute the costs accordingly to each of our funds within the city.
Okay. I remember what we used to call, Melissa, revolving funds so well, because my department was one. So basically, I guess we're saying that revolving funds, the cost of revolving funds operation is split over the operating departments, right?
Well, I think the, I think the answer is yes to that. I think we're trying to identify all of those costs where, in particular, the security cost. We used to have every department or every bureau would manage their own security contract. They would, they would, you know, hire their own, go through an RFP process to hire their own security needs. We found that it was beneficial to the taxpayer and the operations to do that all as one big operation and RFP. For many years after that, again, we noted that in the, in the general fund budget, it fell under our risk management department as a contract that they let. Because it's so similar in kind to fleet, to IT, and to other internal services, I think that decision is, was made to pull that into the transfer fund so that we could, you know, kind of divvy up the cost as our user departments use those services.
Okay. Yes, exactly. Aldo woman, Bill, you remember correctly, right? We did have the internal service allocation that would go back. This is basically a change in budgeting philosophy. Over time, our security guard costs across four security services has significantly increased as we brought more facilities online. Of course, definitely the cost to outfit proper security plans in our facilities. And so we wanted to change the budgeting philosophy to bear that now in the risk management fund as a chargeback. What you will recall, Aldo woman, Bill, is our property line of insurance now bears that cost, and is going to charge you back across, whether it's the general fund facility or it's primarily enterprise funds, facility or business-type facility, so they can incorporate it in what it costs to run their operations program and have proper security for their scope of service.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Aldo woman, Miller Buckley.
Thank you, Mayor Johnson. Thank you, ladies, for your presentation. I have several questions. Under citywide expenses, did I hear you all say that you didn't have anything in the fund part for that in reference to our hurricane expenses for the contract, for the hurricane expenses, debris pickup and stuff?
No, ma'am. We would still have those costs, it's simply that we, it's not that we don't expect to have a disaster expense in FY twenty-five. We plan for those things, and we have those contracts in place, and we have reserves that are able to pay for them if needed. But in our accounting and in our proposed budget, we, the difference between our FY twenty-four projected actual, meaning what we know or think we're going to pay or have paid out in terms of our total expenses for the year come December thirty-first, is more in FY twenty-five than we propose to spend in FY, it's more in twenty-four this year than we propose to spend in twenty-five. And the difference is because of the emergency expenses that we incurred this year as a result of the named storms that impacted the Savannah area, and specifically the debris collection emergency contract that we needed to activate after Hurricane Debbie. That's a very, very expensive service. Now, all of that up until December twenty-third will be a hundred percent reimbursable from the federal government because of the disaster declaration that the president made for our area. And so when we say that we're not expecting to have it, it means that we're always prepared for those things to come, and we have a way to pay for them. But we are not proposing necessarily a line item for disaster debris collection in twenty-five, even though we paid for it in twenty-four. And that's, that's the difference there. So I hope, hopefully that addressed your question.
It did. General fund expenses, where there is other, six percent, what does other entail?
You want to get it?
All right, so other entail is usually our payments to, for, say, for instance, we, what we do at the City of Savannah, if a vehicle has a lifespan of seven years, we will pay over the course of the lifespan of the vehicle into the vehicle replacement fund for the replacement. So in this instance, our vehicle, our computers are all considered other in that category.
Okay, and that's just, that has nothing to do with personnel? That's just?
No, that has nothing to do with personnel.
All right, two-hundred, under the active ledger, two-hundred-and-seventy-one active projects, where can we find those two-hundred-and-seventy-one active projects located at in our budget book? I think you said it, I just didn't.
It's not going to be in the budget book, because the budget book is looking at the new allocations, that savannahga.gov and then the Capital Projects Management site, that is where you're going to find that semi-annual update that's going to have all of the active projects at the time listed.
Okay, now, also, the active capital ledger balance, sanitation, one percent, what is, explain that to me.
Sanitation doesn't have a whole lot of capital expenses right now. Most of their stuff is handled in operating. We are looking in the future at expanding like sanitation headquarters and landfill management, but right now, we've actually sort of postponed those capital investments to keep rates lower for the customers.
Okay.
If you recall, our chief financial officer, David Maxwell, kind of talked to those enterprise funds. We went through a very, very large capital improvement plan several years ago with sanitation to expand the landfill. That's where most of the capital cost in sanitation come from. We are in a very nice but temporary headquarters for sanitation, and so we're able to kind of stay there and recover a little longer before we build a new headquarters for sanitation.
Okay.
It should be noted that three million is three million, so for those that are watching that particular slide, when you see the three, it's actually talking about three million dollars, which is one percent of that pie.
Okay, fiscal twenty-five detail, there's seventy-eight projects. Where can we find those seventy-eight projects?
So those are all listed in the capital book. You can actually see them, they've each got a marker in the table of contents. Then they're all also listed out after the fund description. So all of the general fund projects that are getting allocations follow immediately behind the general fund project, or general fund description on page two-ninety-five.
Two-ninety-five.
Two-ninety-three, two-ninety-five, and two-ninety-seven are where it is detailed.
And then all of the pages following that, two-ninety-seven, all the way to the end of the book, three-eighty-five, each of those pages describe and detail the capital, each capital project that's being funded new in this capital plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Just a couple of things. I think, Saucia, thank you for your presentation. You said something referring to the general fund expenses amount drainage increase.
Don't recall that one.
I wrote it down when you were speaking. You mentioned a drainage increase. Well, Jay, let me ask you.
Oh, I mentioned the expenses that we contribute, like earlier this year, when we maintained the millage rate, we put investment into drainage and Vision Zero.
For the last two years, in our summer millage rate adoptions, when council has decided to maintain the millage rate, we have put any revenue growth from that millage rate into, in both years, drainage.
That was my question, actually, about that millage rate. When we maintained it, I think it was like seven mil. We were expecting to spend that in drainage.
Seven million, yes.
Is that seven million, is that represented here? Is that, does, is that the reason we had an increase in the drainage spending expenses?
That is, that is one of the reasons, yes. So we had, I think, seven million in, in the summer of twenty-three, a little bit less this year in twenty-four. All of those went to our stormwater fund that was created in that first year FY twenty-three, when we took any additional revenue from the property tax millage and put that into stormwater drainage. So that's what, that is what is accounting for those increases in the So that's what, that is what is accounting for those increases in stormwater. We also, this year, in FY25, we make a, not to confuse it, we make a 1 mil equivalent contribution to our capital plan from our general fund. So, so that's-
What does that do to?
That's just our, that's-
That's our operating procedure.
That's, that's how we want to, that's how we want to continue to grow the capital budget, is we make a contribution from our operating budget as the equivalent of 1 mil. And this year, 1 mil is equivalent to a little over $8 million. We put that towards our capital plan. And that capital plan, you know, funds everything from drainage improvements, street sidewalks, cemeteries, et cetera. But we've seen mostly the, the need and the, you know, the decisions from council to put a lot of that into stormwater.
Thank you. And one other question. When, one of the young ladies mentioned facility space planning, as they talked about the capital improvement plan. And I'm sure you have been having these discussions and, and you all have started the planning process. Will we see these options come to us in the form of a workshop or how would we get involved in?
Yes, ma'am. We, I think FY25 is going to be a big, big year for municipal space planning. There are a number of things that we need to do and want to do and we will bring those forward in a workshop. And then how, and then however council, you know, wants to continue to be engaged. There are several issues that we need to do. One, we need to expand our public safety services out west and we've got an agenda item on this council's budget to help get that started in New Hampstead. We lease several of our police precincts and we'd like to make a plan for having our own police precincts and getting out of our leased spaces. And of course, we have, we have a need for more general municipal office space, not only because, you know, we, several years ago, we, we left a big leased space with 40,000 or 50,000 square feet of office space. I mean, if kind of, you know, crammed into the spaces that we had, the coastal Georgia center at some point is no longer going to be available to the City of Savannah. So those are some of the decisions that we're working through and the options that we want to bring to council for mostly around public safety needs and then how are we going to solve for our, our non-public safety municipal space needs.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In reference to the hurricane fund, city manager, you were stating that the city will be receiving reimbursement from the federal government.
Yes, ma'am.
Those reimbursed, those reimbursement funds, will those funds be moved over to fiscal year 2025? And this is the reason why there is not a line item for the hurricane fund?
No, ma'am. When we get those reimbursements for any expenses that we incurred for those emergencies that are allowable reimbursement costs for FEMA, like our debris collection, that will all be applied to FY24, the year that we incurred the expense. So in a sense, the federal government reimburses us back. We pay for these services upfront and the federal government through FEMA, because of the disaster declaration, will reimburse us the cost for those services and we will apply that in our accounting to FY24. The, we, we show, and I think this is coming from an early slide in Sancia's presentation, which shows the past several years of our kind of budget numbers, I believe it was citywide revenues. And it shows our FY23 actual. If you look at total revenues, we had 541.1 million in total actual revenues in FY23. We know they're actual because we can account for them now. Because FY24 is not yet over, we are projecting that our revenues will reach 615 million. And that includes the reimbursements from the federal government. In FY25 proposed, which this budget is built around this total, we, we, we expect to collect 601.6 million in total revenues. And that includes property tax, sales tax, franchise fees, other user fees, and rates that we charge for specific businesses types. So the, the difference really between the, the projected FY25 total of 601 million, projected revenue versus what we believe the, our, our ending revenue collections for the current year will be 615, the difference is in those emergency expenses and the revenues we will receive from the federal government as a reimbursement of.
Very good. All right. With the proposed budget of 602 million, the statement was made, and first of all, thank you all so much, ladies, for doing a good job. One of the things that I do believe in is that when there are great leaders, great leaders don't like to just to be leaders themselves and just move on individually, but great leaders like to produce leaders themselves. So thank you all so much, groups of ladies, on, on your work. And thank you so much, Mrs. Carter, for that leadership and city manager. With the 602 million proposed budget, it was stated that it was, it's based on, it's also based on economic growth. Can someone just expound on that economic growth?
Sure. So kind of what, what I just talked a lot about in my budget message, both written and how we opened up the other day in our, in our workshop, is our, our needs, our expenses, and our revenues are all tied to our economy and more specifically to our local economy. So many of our needs are defined by how well our residents and businesses are doing and the kind of services that we want to be able to provide. It also dictates whether or not we're growing, whether or not new residents and new businesses are coming, which mean that we need to expand our service lines and, and serve more people and more businesses because more exist. That growth also increases our revenues. New growth, new businesses being built, new homes being built, old properties being restored are going to, the valuations of those properties are going to go up because they're either being built new or they're being rehabilitated. And so, our property tax digest is going to grow naturally because of that growth without changing or in our cases, reducing the millage rate. The tax digest is going to grow because the valuations of those properties have grown. We, that's 109 million projected for FY25 as property tax. So, you know, in a 601 million budget, it's, it's a big part of it, but not all of it. We also get a, a, a lot of our revenue comes from sales tax. We get a, we get a portion of 1 penny for lost, which is for operating expenses that we share with the county and the other municipalities. We get a share of the splopped penny, which all goes to capital expenses and to our capital budget. And for our hotel motel tax, which I know you all know intimately, we raise those rates from 6 cents a dollar to 8 cents a dollar spent at hotels to be collected. We get, the city's general fund gets 33 and a half percent of those funds for our general fund. The convention center gets a portion of those funds, the destination marketing organization gets a portion of those funds, and this is all dictated by state law. And then a portion of those funds are given to the city to manage in what's called a tourism product development, right? So that's how we're paying for the waterworks redevelopment, River Street redevelopment, Tidetown, et cetera. So when, when, you know, so with that sales tax, the more people are either visiting Savannah and, and visitors are spending money in Savannah, or the more, you know, money that local Savanians have to spend money locally, the more sales tax revenue we're going to collect and, you know, the more revenue that we're going to have. So that's, that's also a part of the revenue growth. And then, of course, we've got our expended, our expanded enterprise businesses as Water and Sewer continues to grow, as our sanitation demand and new homes come online. You know, we're continuing to, to grow customers that way as well. So the, all of that growth and all of that economic growth really pushes up our revenues. It also pushes up our expenses.
The other thing is, I have a question. When, when do we start considering recommendations for SPOSS 8?
Well, I think very soon. I think when we, when we start the beginning of the year, obviously, we have to work in coordination with the county and our other municipalities. And this body will need to work with them, you know, to determine when we want that SPOSS 8 on the ballot or if we do at all. I would recommend that it's a very, very important source of revenue, not only for the City of Savannah, but for the other municipalities in the county. But we will start to develop that list with council at the beginning of the new year. I will provide council with what city staff knows to be our current capital needs and, and then, you know, we will work with you all to kind of fill in the gaps or prioritize new things or new projects. I think we, you know, you'll see from us in the new year on that potential SPOSS 8 list, a lot of stormwater improvements, even as we consider different sources of revenue as well as some transportation needs as well.
That is what I was, was thinking about when that was coming up because in previous councils and conversations and even with this administration, we were talking about the SPOSS dollars and, and, you know, my, my big thing is drainage and stormwater and having the focus in our upcoming thoughts on SPOSS to be drainage and stormwater. So thank you so much for answering that for me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. It's also, SPOSS is also beyond being an administrative feat, it's also political feat. It has to pass by the majority of voters in this county. So there is also a rhyme, a rhythm, a reason to be able to get it done and get it done effectively. I remind council, the last countywide local option sales tax, which was a T-SPOSS, failed in the county, although it passed in the City of Savannah. So we have been having some of those preliminary conversations about when and how. The strength of any SPOSS, which has not failed in this county, is the strength of the projects that are included. But everybody has to be able to have strong projects so their municipalities will be able to pass it. So I agree with the city manager that we've had in these very preliminary conversations. We expect that they will step up at the beginning of the year because they end, what, 2026? 2026 is 7 collection?
I think the SPOSS, the current SPOSS ends in, I think, '26, end of '26.
Right. So we're, we're kind of on track to start, you'll start hearing about that more. So, thank you. Anything else from council on this? Okay. All right. Ladies, thank you very much. Mr. Manager, I know you also have something very exciting to discuss as well. 1.1 million for fun.
Yes, thank you.
I, I want us to change the name of recreation. I like Department of Fun.
Isn't it?
What, what would it take for us just, I mean, I just think, you know, you call things what they are and you, you've been saying it for a long time and I think, you know, maybe for this budget, we just, just change it, you know, as a function. And it helps keep staff and all of us engaged about what it's really about.
Yeah. Well, I, we, we love to call it the, the Department of Fun. I think in the charter along with, you know, Park and Tree Recreation and Leisure is one of those.
We'll change it.
You know, kind of etched in stone. But I, I think that, Mayor, you're absolutely right and we really love the direction that council has taken our Rec and Leisure Department, the investments that have been made and prioritized. And it's really been really rejuvenating to, to our, to not only to our staff, but for the residents that we serve. And I know as we, you know, we, we talked about, you know, what's in our capital budget for Rec Reimagine for FY25 and beyond. But you've also made incredible investments in Rec Reimagined here in the last several years and you're seeing some of the fruits of that labor. And we've got a particularly special one on the council agenda today and we've got Chief Taphne Young and Director Roberts to, to talk about that. So, Taphne?
Yes, sir. Thank you and good afternoon, City Council. I've been sitting back there practicing not smiling so much, but I, I can't seem to break that. I, I just want to thank you all so much. As you all may recall, Recreation Reimagine was conceived in 2021. And you may recall, we had done surveys, we were out all across the city to try to find out how people were rating our facilities and why they weren't coming. And we presented to City Council and you approved our first budget for 2022. And I think that you would probably agree between 2022 and 2023 and now 2024, it's been a whirlwind of projects and ribbon cuttings and a lot of press coverage because we got real busy with those funds. And so, we have made improvements to so many playgrounds, basketball courts, tennis courts, pool resurfacing, community centers, new play spaces. And so, it's been very exciting. But even in that first year, on one of those slides, we talked about reimagining what a playground would look like in Savannah. And I showed you some examples of how that was being done across the country. And you graciously approved some funding for a signature playground. And so, I wanted to talk a little bit about what does signature mean? And I know we may end up down the road with a new name, but in my mind, it's a signature playground because that's our autograph. It also means a distinguishing style. And as we make improvements to many of our playgrounds, Savannah's big enough for a mega playground. We're a large city. We attract people from all over the region. But the signature playground is most special because it's serving the, the folks who live here in Savannah. And one of the things that we've been missing in our playgrounds as we've been upgrading everything is a place that's inclusive. It's rare to find a playground that has equipment that every child, regardless of their physical ability, can enjoy and not have a separate location that serves young, young people with special needs and they can't enjoy. They have to sit on the sideline and watch children who physically are able to traverse all of the equipment have fun. And so, I'm so excited and pleased to share with you the signature playground. I am not going to present the details. Our senior director of the Department of Fun will go through the details. We presented a little bit of this at the budget retreat last week. We had an open house that was very well received. I've had a chance to type up all of the comic cards. We got great feedback about it. And the location is in the northwest corner of, of Daffin Park. So why Daffin Park? The size of the playground required a big piece of land. It would have swallowed one of our smaller parks. But it's also a key location because it's on a major artery. And so, it's easily identifiable. Everyone knows where Daffin Park is. It's large enough to support it without being out of scale. It also has interior roads that allow people to do drop off and pickup around the traffic circle that's at the end of the park. And it's also one of our most active parks, also being the largest one in Savannah. You have Grayson Stadium, you have a turf field, volleyball, tennis courts, basketball courts, swimming pool. courts, swimming pool. And this is where we play many of our football games, as you know, on Saturday mornings on the field. I'm excited about a place that's inclusive because today we are tied to those little devices, those mobile phones. And people aren't asked connected, but children connect us because mom and dad and auntie and grandma and grandpa bring children to places to play. So it's my hope that when we are able to cut the ribbon for this park next year, that it will bring the community back out and we'll have a place where we're socializing. Recreation is not just about physical health, it's about social health as well. And I believe that the signature playground will help to get us there. So at this point, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Mr. Roberts. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council.
Good afternoon.
Thank you for the opportunity to present this exciting project that will enhance the recreation landscape in the city of Savannah. As Chief noted, the signature playground will be a milestone project of the city's Rec Reimagine initiative, an initiative which focuses on rethinking how recreation is delivered in Savannah with an emphasis on enriching the lives and residence, of residents and guests by providing high-quality recreation experiences. Today, I will outline the details of the new playground and some of the features and benefits of the Game Time equipment, which is on the council agenda for your approval later today. The city's first signature playground will be more than just a place to play. It will be a destination that exemplifies innovation, inclusivity, and excellence in recreational design. PlayCor, which is the parent company of Game Time, utilizes recreation industry best practices as well as research to help develop product and play space design. Those principles were incorporated, incorporated into the signature playground, and the selection of the equipment components will qualify the location as a national demonstration site for both play on and inclusive play, two of PlayCor's four core service areas. As a play on national demonstration site, the playground promotes physical activity, supporting healthier lifestyles, and addressing childhood obesity. Some of the features of the equipment encourages six key play behaviors, including swinging, balancing, climbing, and sliding. The signature playground will also set a new standard for inclusivity, reflecting our commitment to ensure that all children, regardless of ability, can participate in meaningful play. Utilizing the seven principles of inclusive play, key features will include sensory-friendly elements, wheelchair-accessible equipment, and zones designed for interaction between children with and without disabilities. So the big question, what will it look like? This will be the city's first large-scale, multi-zone, inclusive playground. As Chief mentioned, the signature playground will be located at Daffin Park at the northwest corner of the park near Waters Avenue. There are six play areas, which we have dubbed the Swings and Things Zone, a shaded area for storytime, a mega zone where all the components will be fully ADA accessible, including the 12-foot tower and slide, the bump and jump zone for our two- to five-year-olds, twist and turn, which provides something more challenging for our older kids, slide and glide, which will include zip lines, the first in the city, and we will also incorporate a splash pad at the site to cool off during the summer as well. We have a few slides showing the details of some of these areas, as well as a fly-through video at the end where you can see a full overview of the concept. As you can see here, this is our slide and glide zone. They have saucer swings, which will accommodate multiple riders, as well as dual zip lines, as I just mentioned. The seating that will accommodate independent and assisted riders, again, opening up that, that access. Our twist and turn zone will be consisted of a visted rope twist tower with a tube, slide, combination spinner climber, and a rope racer where the kids can climb on, through, under, over, any way that they can. Our mega zone, this area will be fully ADA accessible and include our poured-in-place rubberized servicing. It will have shade on top of the play equipment and be fully accessible. And many of the other play structures that you'll see is you can get access up to a certain point, but never really utilizing the whole entire thing. This play unit does that. Some of the other playground features that we'll have is, again, equipment that accommodates six to 12-years-old, adaptive swing seats, which will also serve multi-generational, right? So a parent and a grandparent, along with their child, can actually get on the swing. The servicing will be ADA compliant. There will be a quiet time and story selling zone, which we can also use as a event space for other types of events, tactile and visual experiences for kids, integrated musical components, again, a splash pad. The entire site will be fully fenced off for gated access and safety, picnic tables, walkways, seating throughout, and then public restrooms that meet ADA compliance. And we have a fly-through video that you can see what the concept will look like once it's completed. How does that look?
That's awesome.
We wanted to look just like that.
We got you.
It's awesome.
All right. So the signature playground project not only elevates our park and recreation offerings, but also showcases the city as a leader in a innovative and inclusive design. It's a chance to make a lasting impact in our community and beyond. The project is expected to take about nine months to complete, and we hope to open this next fall. And with that, I will take any questions that you have.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you. And I'll note that this, we do have a contract on the agenda later this afternoon for the construction of the signature playground in Daffin. And the team held a onsite engagement for the community earlier this week, last week. And it was pretty special. I know several of you attended that as well. So we're very excited about the project. We hope that you are too.
Thank you very much. We'll entertain questions from council, but I wanted to just lift up two things. First of all, you know, we say that Savannah will be a safe, environmentally healthy, economically thriving community for all. And because people interact differently, or they learn differently, or they recreate differently, we should still strive to find ways to be inclusive. And so this is a big way of doing that. So thank you for, for your vision, working in that. The second thing is, what, who, who's going to stop my big behind from going on that? Because it looks fun. I mean, I'm sitting here looking like I could do that, I could do that, I could do that. I, I think you're going to have a problem with adults. I mean, just saying, hey, because I'm sitting here like, wow, that looks like fun, that looks like fun.
All means all, Mayor.
Well, yeah. Yeah. Who's going to rescue me?
We, we, this will be a staffed park, and it's, it's just right across the street from Recreation's headquarters. That's also located at Daffin Park. And this will be a, a staffed park. And we will be able there to, to stop you specifically, Mayor, from crawling into spaces that you should not crawl into.
That mean I'd be able to get out of. Any questions from council?
Yes, sir.
We'll start with Alderman Leggett.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Nick, that was beautiful. Thank you for the presentation that you set up onsite. That was awesome. And thank you for being able to address all of the questions that came from the multiple amount of people that walked up. Even, they even brought the animals, Mr. Mayor. They brought dogs and everything else out there just to see what was happening. It was a nice tent set up. It was a nice circus theme, but it's a, I think that's going to be a awesome space for everybody to be able to go out and have fun. But I have one question. When, when we first got in the office, we had an issue with a young child that walked away from the playground area and slipped into the lake. Do we have anything in the future to address the, the lake area to make sure that we don't have any young people walking away from the park area and walking to that lake area?
So the, the whole entire playground will be fenced, fenced around. And we also are looking to add a security as well in terms of cameras. So that'll help sort of deter some of those items. But again, this, this will be a staffed park. We do our lunch in the parks at Daffin. This is another opportunity to add a, a location where we can employ youth during the summertime as well. So we will try to have a presence, both physically, as well as cameras and fencing as well, physically.
So you guys are definitely going to do the entire Recreation Reimagine. So the things that we just dreamed of, you're going to try to make it a reality?
If you fund it, I will build it.
Thank you, sir.
And I do want to recognize my staff as well. They've put a lot of work in over the last year. We've knocked out a lot of projects. Ricky Allison, who's our operations manager's away on Thanksgiving break, and then Peter Meyerhofer, as well, our other assistant director on the community services side.
Well, we thank you for building out all of these different avenues that we'd be able to raise our kids with as a championship football coach. I have to make, I have to make sure that our kids start off in a great place.
In the third and fourth district. Thank you very much.
I, I'm wondering, and I'm going to just do hashtags, and I'm going to do shots on Thanksgiving every time I hear championship football team. That's one. Alderman Wilder-Bryan?
Yes, sir. Thank you for a really awesome presentation. It just warms my heart that the Alderman from the fourth district, we get to share this at Daffin Park because we were beginning to think that we were the redheaded stepchildren. Forsyth is beautiful. We get to introduce some other things. But I just got one question, two questions. I see on the other key playground features, that white building, will that be a rental space that they can have parties there? What, what exactly is that building? Is that where quiet time is going to be?
No, that's actually the restroom building.
That's the restroom?
They will have a restroom building. That's one of the key features that's missing at the park. It wouldn't be to, quite to that scale.
Yeah, I see restrooms on the side.
Yes. That'll be restrooms.
Okay. So go back to that other slide. I just got one question that I just really, I know all means all, but go back to the one before that? No.
Go the other way.
The other way. Go back. Because I, I want to make sure that we share that. Let me see what slide it was on. It's the key, other key playground features. Please pull that one up. Now, the last bullet point says, "public restrooms with adult changing tables." Explain to me what that means.
The, the adult changing tables are larger. You're, you're used to the infant changing tables, which are very small.
Right.
But as children grow that are wheelchair-bound, they need a larger space. And so that's why they're called adult changing tables, so that they're big enough to assist a, a child who is wheelchair-bound and, and being changed. And when we had the open house, we had a parent that was there that was so excited. But her first question was, you're going to have restrooms. Will you have adult changing tables? And when we said yes, and Alderman Palumbo's familiar with her, she has been a person that's really been pushing for that. And what she shared with me is that it's so rare that it makes it impossible for parents with children who are wheelchair-bound to, to take them anywhere, to enjoy anything because most facilities don't accommodate that. So we're really excited to be able to make sure we're including that at, at the park. As Nick said, the building will be a bit smaller than that. It will be restrooms, but the other portion of that is to allow us to have picnic tables that are also wheelchair-accessible and umbrellas because we know people are going to be out there all day and they're going to need a little spot to eat.
Yeah. You know, I've been saying for four years and going into the fifth year, that it's the little things that mean so much to our citizens. They're willing to wait for larger things when we have good government. That's good government. And thank you for listening to that parent and explaining what adult changing tables mean to me. Thank you so much. Great job, too. Great summer, too.
Thank you, Alderman Palumbo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much, team, for your incredible work on this project. As you know, I'm very proud of it and all of the work that you've done to bring a new signature playground. And I'm going to throw something up in the air. I hope I can land this thing, that even though it has a fence, it is truly boundless, that all children of all abilities have a place that they can play, that's the heart of our community. And Daffin Park is the people's park that everyone can come and enjoy. And we hope that this becomes a model for each district. Of course, we'd, we'd love to see more, but that no matter your age or your ability, young or old, and, Mr. Mayor, I will say, the top feedback that we received is, where is the adults' playground that's out there? But truly, it was a very intentional design and investment, a place that adults can watch their kids and enjoy it as well, with park benches, restrooms, a place to grab a bite to eat, and so proud of it. And I took it to the source. And in addition to this, I took it to my nieces, Anna Maria, who's six, and baby Ally, who is three. If you were questioning my Italian credentials, yes. Alessandra and Anna Maria both give it their seal of approval and have some recommendations, but we'll make sure that they fill out a comment card so that they can follow the process too. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other questions? Alderman, Mel Blakely, and then Alderman Bell.
Thank you all so very, very much for the presentation and for making this come to fruition. You know, Taphne, when I first got elected, that was my main concern, recreation. And I must say that you all have done a phenomenal job with this, and I appreciate it. But as an at-large representative, I am just concerned. I see we having it over on Daffin Park, but let me ask you this. Does Forsyth Park have some of those same capabilities, those same instruments on that playground as what we're going to be doing at Daffin Park? And if they don't, how can we make Forsyth Park almost the same as what Daffin Park is going to be like? And what about West Savannah, the west side of Savannah, and also Highlands? Now, you said this park costs 1.0.
One million, 1.1.
1.1 million dollars, right? Okay. So in my mind, I'm thinking that's not a lot of money to put into the, this particular facility. And what could we do to put into Forsyth and also do the same thing in West Savannah and also the Highlands?
So I, I can start, and Taphne and Nick can follow in. I do know that, you know, that Daffin, the park there, you know, was, there are some portions of that that are accessible, certainly not to the extent that the signature park is. And, you know, I think what, why we're calling this a signature park is not because it's going to be the only one, but because it's going to kind of, you know, mark- to be the only one, but because it's going to kind of, you know, mark what we want to be building and providing for all of our communities in the future. Obviously, there's a certain scale that Daphin Park has that can accommodate a large structure like this. The same is true for Forsyth. The same is true for a few of our parks in the city, but not all of them. And, you know, playgrounds are an important part of Recreimagined. But so are courts, so are community centers, so are gymnasiums, et cetera. And so all of those kind of investments that City Council have made, you know, are showing up everywhere in the city. But, you know, this is, we, you know, we're calling this a signature because it's kind of creating a new standard for how we want to think about how our amenities serve everyone. And this is the first, but not the last, of these types of investments.
I understand that, but my question was, how soon can we get it to those other locations? And what could we do to bring Forsyth Park to the same level as what we're gonna... Because 1.1 million dollars is not a lot of money for our city. So I'm sure we could find the funds to upgrade Forsyth Park, put something like this in the Highlands, and also in West Savannah.
Mr. Manager, let me get into that for a couple of reasons. First of all, I think that, as you see, Recreation Reimagined is a toddler, so to speak. But it is evolving and really finding its legs in terms of being able to provide innovative spaces in areas. Every area doesn't need, want, deserve the same amenity. I think they have to be able to find ways of finding what different neighbors need based on available size and based on what the residents want and need. We were in Summerside, where we had the first outdoor event of space for adults. So I think we have to just continue to allow staff to create those opportunities. I'm certainly willing to fund, and I think council should as well, as they bring those things toward us. When we look at, I think of the west side, District 4, where this is, although I think Alderman Plumb is correct, this is a citywide amenity, District 4 doesn't have a community center nor a gym. In District 1, we opened up a community center and a gym within the same year. So I think when we look at it, we have to be very, very global. I know the Highlands, certainly I've played a part in acquiring some of that land there. I think staff has to continue to be out working in those communities, finding out what their desires are and their wishes for their community, and help have them be a part of that. And as they come forward with us, as you see, they are regulars at city council meetings asking us. And I think that when they come forward to us with these ideas, with community input, I think we should be ready to fund them, and I agree with you. 1.1 in the grand scheme of things is not a huge amount of money, but I think we have to allow our professionals to determine what those needs are, and then I hope to have your support in funding them.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
If we build it, they will come.
And if we build it with their support, they will love it.
If we build it, they will come.
Thank you, Alderman Bell.
It's all about equity.
Thank you, Chief, Taffany, and Nick, Director Nick. This is awesome, and it certainly is a great beginning. Like my colleague to my left, I'm concerned about the entire city, too. But I'm willing to wait and see, actually get this first one built and give the community an opportunity to see it. And as was stated before me, I think recreation is unique or sensitive. But I think Nick said in his comments, he talked about how recreation facilities were built for the residents of the community, for our citizens. And although we cater to folk from all across the world, our residents really need to be part of the decision-making process when it comes to what's placed in their neighbors for recreational facilities. So I'm willing to wait and see how... That's beautiful. I mean, it is absolutely phenomenal. But I would love to wait and see how the communities likes it, since you've gotten their input in the planning. Unless, as Alderman Blakely is concerned about, let's plan to expand this kind of thing with residents' input to other parts of the city, all over the city.
Thank you, Alderman Shabazz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief Young, City Manager, and Mr. Roberts, thank you all so much for your leadership. Alderman Plumb, also with your oversight on this. And Alderman Wilder-Bryant and Alderman Leggett, this is so great. I want to state that with the, with this, this large playground that's going to be for all residents, just like when the Little League football teams come out and everybody, they're from all over the entire city. So I see this as this citywide playground. One of the bullet points on the other key playground features that really caught my eye is the second bullet point, the adaptive swing seats, including multi-generational dual swings. And Mr. Roberts said something about grandparents and parents being able to be with their children. Now, that really caught my eye because that is gonna be so special. How does that work, though?
So it's a swing that has seats on both sides, so you can actually push as a parent or caregiver, and the child's on the other side of it. I don't think that we have any of those current features in our system. And again, this gave us an opportunity to really try some things in terms of, and any generational swing and zip lines, and a lot more climbing apparatuses as well, too. So we're trying a lot of different things in this playground, and we wanted to offer something unique and different from what else is out there in our systems.
This is absolutely innovative and, again, putting us, the city of Savannah, as a leader, even in recreation. Safety, safety.
Mr. Mayor?
So in reference to the, I see the wonderful colorful turf that's underneath, and I'm always concerned in our recreational spaces in reference to the turf, because it is what our human beings hit once they fall off in play on our playgrounds. So are we going to maintain those colors? That's the first question, without turfing on that playground?
So we have now done final selection on the color palette for all of the equipment. It will have poured-in-place rubberized surfacing. That is the colorized surface that you see there. It is a soft material. It's not concrete that's under there. It's actually gravel and sand. It is impervious. It drains well. It is low maintenance. So those are some of the features and why we wanted to go with that as opposed to mulch, which we constantly have to replace, constantly have to wash out, and things like that.
Okay, and with that, that subject, on the other playgrounds within the city of Savannah, and also with the safety and the turf situation, are we looking to transfer out this mulch and putting in this mulch right here?
Yes, we began doing that this year. As I mentioned at the BRT, we changed out the mulch from landscaping mulch to engineered wood fiber. And the engineered wood fibers tumble, it interlocks over time, so it becomes a more stable ADA-compliant surfacing. So yes, we've begun doing that, and in our operating budget, we will continue to do so as we go through our maintenance next year.
Okay, and very good, very good. And last, last concern now with, you know, I'm just in the space now myself. I don't see any benches for those who want to watch the children around these spaces.
Well, that was the other comments, too, that we got at the open house. It will have adequate seating. We just did not show them this particular plan, but they will have seating, both shaded with the picnic tables as well as seating around the entire property. There's beautiful tree canopy there. It's already shaded, so we're gonna strategically place benches in those shaded areas to provide light and sight for all of the equipment.
I'm excited. Good job, y'all.
Thank you, Alderman Lanier.
Yes, thank you. Thank you all for the presentation. I love it. This is great, and I want to thank you all for all of the good work you've been doing around recreation and reimagining recreation in Savannah. Just to plug, of course, we're gonna want this in every area, Jay, so we want to continue to support these signature-type playgrounds. I know Bowles Ford was supposed to be the equivalent of that type of area on the west side, and we'll continue to have those conversations. And Jay and I have been talking about the Highlands, and I know they would love this or whatever it is you all think would work in the Highlands. But just to mention a couple of things, because I have opportunity, we gotta work on regulating that water some, Nick, around those splash pads. You know the situation we have where we can't control it from the locations.
We've gotten that issue worked off in next spring.
Okay, sounds great. And we do want to continue the investments, but I have one last question, and that is, what is the weight limit on the zip line?
I do not know it off the top of my head, but I will definitely get back to you.
My grandson, he's back in the country. He's gonna love that. If he loved the one in Hudson Hill, he's really gonna love the ones out in Daphin Park. He's gonna spaz out to see all of those colors and everything. So I think this is great. Congratulations on your work. Thank you.
Thank you. And final question, and this is from me. I guess, given Savannah's sometimes very challenging weather and how the weather affects fixed surfaces, are we coming back within a year or two and replacing elements of it because of the wear and tear? I kind of want to know about the warranty situation of this. Is this a five-year solution, or is it something less? How do we talk about maintenance of it?
And I'll, let me begin, and Director Roberts can talk about the specifics of the warranty. I think this is really a helpful question, because every capital improvement that we make in the city, whether it's rec, public safety, water sewer, et cetera, we always have to calculate the operating impact of capital. We have to understand that these capital investments, while 1.2 million dollars may sound like a small sliver of money, it's a hard thing to come up with in a finite budget with a large service needs. But we also have to make sure that we're accounting for the recurring dollars that we need to maintain and repair those capital improvements over time, which is an easy thing for governments to cut first, right? And we've seen, we see that. We see deferred maintenance all across our city, and we've got to get to a better place where we are accounting for that operating impact of capital and putting the money aside that we need to do to replace it, similar to how we operate our vehicle replacement fund, right? So for every, every year, for every car we own, we put some money away in our fleet replacement fund to be able to buy a new car when that life expectancy on that car is done. So, but I'll let you talk to the warranty as well.
Yeah, so the, the contract includes a two-year warranty on labor, 10 years on the equipment itself from game time. In terms of the surfacing itself, it generally is about an eight-year usage out of the poured-in-place. But again, a lot of it is based on traffic, right? We know underneath the swings and where the slide kickouts are, those are hot spot areas. We'll keep monitoring them, and then we'll also do subsequent repairs and, you know, look at, monitor those areas as well.
Thank you. For me, kids are bigger now than they used to be. And I speak at middle schools, and you see 12-year-olds that are bigger than you, and 13-year-olds with beards. So I guess, I just, knowing that we have to account for that someone might actually meet the age requirement, but really might have the bulk that, you know, makes this a little challenging, so.
We will have signage throughout the park at each one of the zones that'll clarify height limits, weight limits, and so forth, and any safety information we'll have as you enter the park in the gated area. So we're gonna make sure we have some of that, and then we're gonna have you to stand by.
With all due respect to Alderman Per T. We, for all. For all. So it's gonna have to be height, and we have to put age on there as well, so. But thank you so much. We appreciate this. Again, Mr. Manager, thank you for supporting our vision for fun. And I think I speak on behalf of council when I say, you know, go forth, let's find the best practices in the world and see how we can make them work for Savannah. But we thank you all so much.
If I could have one moment for a point of clarification. The item that's on the agenda today at 1.1 is for the playground equipment and the poured-in-place surface. We will have some other agenda items coming in. In fact, as a part of the 2025 budget, there's an additional allocation, because we still have to do the fencing, the restrooms and those. So I wanted you to anticipate that. You were right. It doesn't all fit into that 1.1. But we're getting a lot of playground equipment, all of the surfacing you see under the playground, all of that is included in that 1.1.
Well, thank you. We appreciate that. Thank you so much. Ladies and gentlemen, our city attorney thought it'd be well at Thanksgiving to not need an executive session. The city manager has concurred with him. So I'm going to ask that we recess until 2:00 PM, but I want us just to gather in front for the photo that we talked about. So, Mr. Manager, anything else, sir?
No, sir. Thank you.
All right. Thank you all so much. Thank you, budget team. Thank you all. We stand and recess. Right here.